Who's doing the school opening? Okay. Yeah. 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 Yeah.[542.12][542.12][S01. I have a grant, the grant budget, not a, I don't know about that. I have, I can slash a bunch of mentor. I don't know how we're gonna have, because I haven't, I don't, I don't know. I have, I don't know what happened, but, and I know we're kind of busy, but, you need, you know, I need to get going on it, but, um, we are, I know, I don't, I mean, I'm sure, obviously, like, um, and I know that money is tight, but, I can't do it with forty thousand, twenty thousand, ten thousand, um, they're what people can get, I don't know.
These two providers, one thing to keep in mind, there were two options available. Florida Virtual School as well as Edgenuity. Edgenuity, we were notified after the posting of this agenda that they are no longer able to provide K to four licenses based on the overwhelming demand for their services since the school closures and going into this next year. These are nationwide providers. We got that notification, meaning if there's K to 12 determination and decision point, which is what you have before you right now, there is only one provider available for the learning management system, which also happens to be the provider that UTL has told us is clearly the preferred provider from their position and perspective. So if the committee would, I would like to have Ms. Maggio share and come up to the microphone and share with you why this, the UTL feels this would be beneficial to teachers across the district.
Okay, I don't know if this is going to work. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Pardon me? I don't know. Hello? Is it on? Okay. Thank you very much. As Dr. Boyd said, I wear two hats very proudly, and one of them is the Lowell Teacher Academy Director, and the other one is the Executive Vice President of the Union. I'm here on behalf of the Florida program, but I want to introduce, my opening comments are not going to be, I'm not wearing a hat of the Director of the LTA, and I'm not wearing a hat of the Executive Vice President of the Union. I am wearing the hat as a new resident of Lowell. I've been here almost a year now, and I love the city. And so I moved into this home, and as you know, when you buy a new home, there's a lot to be done, right? You have a lot of things that you have to fix. So I wanted to share with you my toolbox, and bear with me, does this have a connection to what the purpose for me being here? And in my toolbox, now, there are a lot of things that needed to be done, right? There are holes to be patched in the wall. And then when you get through with all those fixants, you want to make it your own, you want to hang up pictures. Jim, you know all about that because you have a lot of pictures in your office now where you didn't when you first started. It looks nice, just like home. But anyway, so I have here, I have, everybody needs, these are basic tools, a hammer, right? I have measuring tape, right? I have a wrench, right? I have a lot of tools in my toolbox, and as I need them, I go to my toolbox. Now, so when I hang up pictures, most of the time, I can go to my toolbox and I need it, whatever I need, I can get it. There are times, though, for example, in the day when I opened up the cabinet, the door to the cabinet in the kitchen, and the door came off, and I looked in my toolbox, I didn't have what I needed in there. So what do I do? Well, I'm not going to call someone because I want to be able to do this myself. So I can go into a store, I can go into, on the Internet, and I can research it, whatever, right? So that's my toolbox, and that's how I use it. So now I'm going to put on a different hat. Now, the hat that I'm wearing is one of a teacher, the Director of the Lowell Teacher Academy, a teacher in the system for well over 20 years. And I've had a lot of experience as a teacher and as a student. And what I'd like to share with you is when I started as a student in 1948, I was in the first grade, and I learned how to read. And I learned how to read with Dick and Jane. Many of you may not know Dick and Jane. Dick and Jane ran, Dick and Jane jumped, Dick and Jane and Spot ran and jumped, right? That's how I learned how to read. Very simple for a teacher, didn't really need a really big toolbox, right? You had a text, you were able to open it up, and you read all about Dick and Jane. It was very boring, by the way, but that's how it happened. So you would fast forward, we had the Ed Reform Act. So now, we are teaching with standards, which is marvelous, right? As a fifth, sixth grade teacher, I taught ELA, and I had certain standards that I had to teach to my students. See, I had to teach them characterization, had to teach them the author's purpose. I know my content, but I am, little secret here, I'm not very creative, right? So now I have to come up with, because I really, the whole purpose of what I'm doing is to engage my kids, right? I want to knock their socks off when I get in that classroom with my lessons. And I tell you something, I speak for every teacher in the system because that's what we all want to do. That's not an easy task. Where do I find the resources? Where are the tools? Well, I also brought my teacher toolbox, right? And it's right here. You'll never see a teacher walking into a building without a big box or something to carry, all right? So let's look in here and see what I have, all right? I'm looking at here, and Robin Desmond, you're in my bag. Can you believe that? Right. What do we talk, we're talking about professional development. Enormous help, thank you. I speak for everyone, we're so appreciative of all the PD that you're able to offer. I have people in here, believe it or not, they, Adi Santos, Karen Wilkins, I could go on and on for the resources that we have. But like my toolbox from home, it's not enough, right? As a teacher, I would spend hours, what did I spend hours on? Most of the time, going on the Internet, looking for something that would help me and give me an idea of how to, you know, teach something and really be able to have an engaging lesson. Have you ever gone on the Internet with a question? And three hours later, you don't even know what the question was, you don't even know how you got where you were, and you've accomplished nothing. That was really a lot of the time I spent in creating lessons. I spent a lot of time on that. So what does all this have, this baggage, if you will, have to do with the Florida program? Ladies and gentlemen, it's a tool. I think it's a misnomer to say it's a virtual, a remote tool, because it certainly has, it has technology in it, it has the lessons in it, but again, it is a tool, and it's how a teacher will use it, right? If I want a video that's going to really bring home a point in a particular topic at a grade level, I can access it right in that program. It is not just for Virtual Academy, which maybe you hope to have someday, it's for every teacher, K through 12, and it's to assist them in getting, in making and creating some really phenomenal lessons. And I can assure you, we have to start with assumption here, and the assumption is, we have some terrific, hardworking, motivated teachers who never give up, who, just as I described to you, I, it's not about me, it's about, and my colleagues that I worked with for 20 years, I could call them on a Sunday, and they were doing lesson plans. So we work very hard to create the plans, you know, for our students. This is not for the teachers, by the way, right? Who's the beneficiary for these phenomenal lessons and all these wonderful tools? It's our children. So really, this is a program that's going to help our children. The teachers are just a vehicle to get to that point. And so I urge you to consider it. When you, I don't know, you went, you were in executive session, I don't know whether you're going to executive session, but I want you to remember my toolbox, and that's what this program is. And I don't think there's a teacher, I don't think there's a principal, I don't think there's anyone, a parent, who would say, nah, I don't think the teachers need more. They get more than enough, because you know what? It's never enough. You have a classroom of students, you have various abilities, you have disabilities, you have various languages, and you have to be able to create a lesson that's going to engage every one of those students. That's a tall order. And if you can give the teachers another tool, a valuable tool to put in their box, they're going to be really grateful. More importantly, the students will be grateful. Thank you very much.
Could you just, so could you just elaborate a little bit more about the tools that are going to be available for the teachers through this?
What it is, and again, I'm not an expert on it, I'm here to tell you about the fact that it's a tool and how it can be used. I have gone into the program, I have talked to representatives from the program. What it does is, like, say, I'm a sixth grade teacher, and I'm teaching, I'm going to do something that I know, I'm teaching author's purpose. That's the standard, it's a sixth grade standard. The Florida program is aligned to our standards. So I can access that program, I can go right into the sixth grade, and I can go into that particular standard, and there is a lesson, and there are resources, and there are videos, all at my disposal, right? So I can take the, I can look at that and say, okay, this is what I want to do, I'm not like this one, but this will really bring home this point. So again, it's just another tool to assist me in creating this lesson. And it goes from K through 12, am I correct? So every teacher, you have 1,100 teachers in the system, every teacher can access that. So it's a tool, I don't know how, it sounds simple, but it's so valuable, especially coming from someone who spent 20 years trying to create really good lessons.
Okay, I'm sure. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you so much for your presentation, but I have a question.
Is your mic on, Andy? Sorry, is your mic on?
Having been a music teacher in the system, I've been getting a lot of the music teachers and art teachers, will this program give them something to do with their kids, K through 12?
I cannot answer that. I know that there are lessons in there specifically for grade level, we're going, I know that there are lessons from K through 12, do they involve the Allied Arts? Maybe, Robin, would you be able to respond to that? Because I really cannot. I would hope that it does, certainly.
I would hope so, too.
Because we're not, you know, these are very important subjects.
Indeed.
And they, they need the same amount of tools in a toolbox that your content area teachers need, absolutely.
Who's going first? Ms. Desmond, and then Mr. Dillon.
So they do have courses for music teachers and art teachers and phys ed teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to comment and say thank you, that was an excellent description, and I'm pretty happy that you are tasked with the job of preparing our new teachers, because you, in about a couple of minutes, kind of described that better than we've been able to in weeks. So that was excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I'm going to direct my questions through you to Ms. Desmond to tell us a little bit about the process we went through in terms of test driving this with our community, what were the reactions and what people got to experience with this program.
So as Dr. Boyd mentioned, Edgenuity, we just learned no longer has the elementary materials because they've filled up from other districts. So at this point, it looks like we're looking at Florida Virtual. So what we did have is some opportunities to view online content and videos, but in small segments. And so we asked all of our district leaders, and that's everyone, not just principals, to review the materials that we were provided from Florida Virtual, so they were able to look at a student account, look at a teacher account. We also allowed our leaders to attend an orientation, a leader orientation on Friday, August 21st, that was organized by Florida Virtual, there was also one by Edgenuity. So our leaders were able to go on and look at those separately to make some judgments as to whether or not this was something that made sense for their schools. So that's what we've done to this point.
So if I could just respond, so we didn't really have families, students or teachers involved, it was more the leadership in the last week.
That's right.
Because I mean, we've been talking about a learning management system for, it seems like, the whole summer, at least a month, I don't know. I know we were waiting for Jesse to give us some recommendations, but it's, it's not just, I mean, it's, it's a good bit of money, and I know they've come down on the price, so it's not quite a million dollars, 800 and something, but we are relying so heavily on this remote tool. I guess I just wanted some sense that we've been able to really get our hands on it and see, and now that Edgenuity dropped off, it seems like, is this is the only one? Is that right?
This is the only one that's available, K to 12. So Edgenuity still has the opportunity to be utilized, six to 12, but we were looking for K to 12 options.
Just in terms of timing, remember, I believe it was the night before, we talked about the school reopening plan overall, which is about August 5th, if I recall. The day before that, we got the state procurement remote guidance, right, Ms. Desmond? If that, if I'm remembering the timeline, something along those lines. It does feel like a long time that we've been discussing it, but it had to go through, we did share out that UTL was highly recommending it, that we heard from the state that they were going to be considering it, but we didn't get the state procurement list until then to see that they actually matched up with what UTL was recommending and what the state was allowing. It is a consolidated timeframe for decision making. We certainly, in a typical time period, would not be making a large-scale curriculum decision. So here, what we're weighing on is, there still is opportunity for Ms. Desmond's team to continue to work forward with others involved. I have had a student who raised their hand, said they'd be interested. I had a parent raise their hand, said they would be interested in, when we get to that point. But again, we got PD starting on Monday, UTL, you can hear the affirmation they're giving to the product, and the other one we had that got sold out, unfortunately.
If I could just ask, so does it have the customization potential that was so important to the task force? Because the task force remote recommendations were really to put forward our teachers' lessons, because we, as you know, we've got many very good teachers working with our kids. So does this Florida Virtual, whatever it's called, have that, give our teachers that opportunity to upload or download, or whatever the word is, their own lessons, and so?
Yes, so Florida Virtual is the product that does have the ability to do that, so you can reorder the materials that they provide. You can choose not to use some of the lessons that they have if you want to upload your own materials. You can also embed links within their content to your content. So if there's some content in there that is connected to something that you prefer to use, you can embed links and vice versa. So if you, if you have your own website, such as like Google Classroom, and you want to embed a link to the Florida Virtual material, you can do that as well. So you can go back and forth. So Florida Virtual provides the learning management system, and then it also provides content management. So you have both, the ability for both, right? So Buzz is the platform that Florida Virtual uses, which is the learning management system. So that allows the students to have their own accounts that the teachers manage, parents can come in as observers and see where their children are progressing, what their children are doing. And then the content is the Florida Virtual content that we then can manipulate so that we can use portions of it, just like, as Pina mentions, it's a toolbox, right? It's like, the content is, as I have equated it to, is like the content in textbooks. We have that, we provide our teachers with texts and materials, but then we choose how we're going to use that based on good practice. And so that is the hope with this material, right? Is that we will use parts of it, we will not have to recreate everything from scratch, which is sort of what we were trying to do in the spring, but we have the ability to customize it so that it's more, more to what we use in Lowell. You know, I feel like we always are trying to, you know, have things to our standards, if that's how you would explain it, I don't know. But we always look at our students and what their needs are, and then figure out how the resources meet those needs.
Well, thank you very much, that's very important, I know, to many of our teachers. Last question, I promise, on this issue. I've been hearing that teachers are concerned that if they're live teaching in the classroom to, let's say, 12 students who are spaced six feet apart, social distancing and all the requirements, that they will also be simultaneously teaching to remote students. Is that your understanding of what we're going to be doing with this system? I mean, I know everyone's going to be trained.
Yeah.
On the remote learning, but how are you envisioning, if you're a live teacher, are you responsible for remote students at the same time? What's your understanding of that?
No, no. Matter of fact, if you recall back to our reopening plan, this was a question, I believe, from Ms. Martin very early on, about how does that hybrid model work? A lot of surrounding communities went to the hybrid model that had that very thing happening, which I think has led to some confusion here. Our plan does not have teachers responsible for students in front of them and students at home at the same time. Matter of fact, we took that out early on, and a lot of people questioned us. Why not go hybrid? So absolute no to your question, simply put, no. But I do think we're going to continue to have to clarify that because a lot of surrounding communities are using that very model, and as we heard before, our teachers live in some surrounding communities. In here, in Lowell, you're either teaching in-person, in-person students, or you're teaching remote students. You're not having to work with the students in front of you and simultaneously teaching students that are at home. We don't quite know how that'll work out, we'll look to see what the surrounding communities, if they're able to perfect it, maybe we can look at that for phase two of ours, but it is not within our school opening plan.
Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming today, appreciate everything you said, I know how hard you work for the teachers. I got an invitation today to meet some new teachers tomorrow at Shed Park.
Thank you, I was going to say that, I just wanted to kind of put in that little, tomorrow we have the new teacher, the Teacher Academy is having orientation for our new teachers, and you've all been invited, and I hope you all show up. It's going to be wonderful, we have a luncheon, I believe, from 12 to 1:00. Dr. Boyd, you'll be speaking earlier than that, but you're welcome to come to the luncheon as well.
8:15, I'm with you, Pina, we're going to end our night and start our day together.
So thank you about that. And Mayor, through you to the superintendent, this program that's 813,000 that we're going to vote on, right, it's going to be paid by a grant, correct?
That's correct. If you remember the original, and I want to give a lot of credit to Ms. Desmond and her team, so while they couldn't go through the full vetting that this committee is used to seeing with a curriculum item of this size, they were able to go through full negotiating. Originally, it was on a per-student level that was about 200 to 300 dollars. This number you see is about 60 dollars per kid. So a lot of credit to Ms. Desmond, it does fit within your grant that you have available. Ms. Kearns, our deputy CFO is here and can answer any questions financially.
And last thing, Mayor, I just want to say to Ms., through you to Ms. Desmond, thank you. I remember you got a grant for a million dollars for the Robinson School also. I mean, I don't have a list of everything you've done for us, but the last question I'd have for you is, can you tell us what schools you worked in the past 20 years?
Oh, one school, there's my home away from home, that was a Robinson Middle School. I loved every minute of it, and I didn't think I would ever stop teaching there, but there was this opportunity to run the Lowell Teacher Academy, but that was my home away from home. Proud to say that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Pina, very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
And sharing your insights with us, we benefit from it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And my questions, I want to be clear, I understand where you and your representation are coming from, absolutely. To the superintendent's point, you know, we don't have a lot of information, and we would normally never make this kind of jump. So I understand that we are all in a bad situation. My questions center around a couple different things. So we've talked a lot about the interplay between, you know, if you're in classroom, if you're remote, does this Florida system, are the students who are theoretically going to be in classroom, are they also going to be accessing this Florida system so that, should they have to go remote, it could be a seamless, so we're basically, and I can let you answer the question before I get all editorial on it. My concern is, is that then every one of our students now are getting a homogenized experience, even our, and maybe that's the benefit, maybe that's what we need to do in this, in this time. So I know we're not, we're not building the perfect system right now, but, so I'm just trying to understand exactly how, what the prevailing kind of approach is going to be in using this, recognizing it's a tool that will get used differently by different teachers, will it lend itself to that kind of flexibility? If a in-student, in-classroom student has the opportunity to do, you know, a project or a hands-on, you know, things like that, that we know are so important, what's the equivalency in this Florida system? Is there an equivalency in this Florida system?
So the system has the ability for a teacher to allow students to go and do group work. So if you think about, I'm not sure how to equate it, maybe if you've ever been in a virtual meeting where then people go out into the breakout sessions, there's the ability for students to work as teams in this environment. So I do think that, I agree with you 100%, this is not what we would do, except for the fact that we're in a pandemic situation.
We have no choice, yeah.
And so, because, you know, I believe that what we have created in Lowell with our curriculum over the years is really great. You know, we've worked really hard to make things experiential and allow for lots of hands-on learning and so forth, because we believe that's the best way for students to learn. But this, this, we have the ability, and we have, you know, other resources that we've invested in from our spring learning, such as some really good hands-on, online hands-on science experience, experiential products and so forth. So as I said, you can embed links to that material, and then you can have students go off and work in teams to discuss sort of what they're doing in a project-based way. So that would be what we could do in the Florida Virtual with remote learning. In class, the task force talked a lot about flipped classrooms, and so for those who maybe aren't familiar with that term, what that is, is students, you know, when they're at home, when they would be doing homework, they actually, their homework would be to watch some videos or perhaps engage in some sort of, in remote learning. And then when they come into the classroom, the teacher really does a lot of work with building the understanding around that material. And so we would utilize our virtual resources for that kind of a learning situation, so that if students were to go full remote, then they would have that learning experience ahead of it, so that they're prepared. And then it also eliminates the need for passing around papers and pencils and things like that in the classroom, students will be using their device when they're in the classroom. So it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the same experience if a student is remote as in the classroom, but we would utilize some of those tools so that students are building that background, so that if we do have to flip to everyone being remote because, because of something that happens with the COVID percentages or what have you, students are not then trying to learn something while they're remote. So hopefully, we're building an understanding of how to use these materials in class, so that if we do have to flip, there's more of a seamless transition than what we had to experience in the fall. And again, you know, I stand by the curriculum we have currently, so I wouldn't want to change it, except for the fact that we're in a situation that kind of dictates that need.
Yeah, no choice, that's, that's the land we're living in right now. So for a third grader, a sixth grader, a sixth grader is working on Author Intent, and that's the benchmark, the content era that they're talking with, can you describe for me what that looks like for that student and that family? They're, they're a remote-only learner, so they're relying on this Florida system, they get up in the morning, and what happens?
Well, hopefully, you know, number one, what we want to make sure we're doing is being really specific and upfront beforehand of explaining what the expectations are for families and students. So, you know, that's, that's a piece that has to happen, almost like an orientation, so that everyone understands what this work environment really looks like, because it's going to be very different from the work, the work environment that we had in the spring. And so that, I think, is, is the big part, is doing a lot of parent outreach and orientation, and that would be in collaboration with our equity office, and utilizing our translators and so forth, so that everyone really understands what the expectation is. But again, I think Dr. Gillery has shared with us some of the possible schedules that we would like students to be following. I think as, as Mrs. Maggio said, there is going to be I think as, as Mrs. Maggio said, there is going to be structure around sort of what the expectations are with using the Florida Virtual. But again, it's a tool. So I think that depending on what the lesson is for the day, it could consist of a student going onto Florida Virtual and, you know, doing some work within the content that's provided there. But then also, there may be links that are going to then bring the student to other content, using other things. Like, you know, as I said, we have this, this science material. So they might read something in, I'll just jump to science just because I was mentioning it earlier as an example. But they might read something that's connected to their science standard that's already built into the Florida Virtual work. But then they might click on a link that will then bring them to this other work that might be more hands-on or experiential. And then they may move into a group and discuss it with some of their, their team members. And then they might come back and have a whole group discussion with the teacher. So I think if you think about some of the experiences that they might have in a, in a regular classroom, we would hope to sort of mirror some of that experience with this virtual environment. So the expectation would not necessarily be that someone is on their own just reading material and answering questions. That would not be the, the experience that we would, we would want.
Are we going to set a percentage goal? Are we going to set a, you know, 33% of the time will be, you know, actively engaged with a, with a teacher, with a, with a group activity or, you know?
Yeah.
If even as a benchmark so we can use it to gauge successful connections?
Right now, what we're saying, and we're still in productive negotiations with the union, we don't yet have agreement there. But I think there is, I think, agreement around, we want the virtual environment to as closely approximate the in-person environment as much as possible. We know we can't mimic it. We know we can't replicate it. Nothing will take the place, but we're going to try to approximate it, which includes the same amount of teacher time with students, the same type of school schedule. We've worked with our principals because, again, remember, we're going to start with remote learners or in-person, but quarantining is a real thing. Kids are going to have to move across both environments. So the schedule, one schedule should mimic the other. And the current collective bargaining agreement is, is driving that in our minds. So what you see in person and what you're used to in person from days past, because that's going to look very different next year as well. But that's what we're trying to work to approximate with our virtual environment. Does that answer your question?
It does, certainly. I mean, it's an effort, and I understand these are ongoing conversations, you know, and they are ongoing and maddening, you know, circular.
But definitely, live, live teaching should be an expectation that every family has and should have. There's going to be some level of live teaching. There will also be, we call that the synchronous teaching. And then there's also going to be the asynchronous teaching, which Ms. Desmond just spoke to about the flipped classroom and how that works. These are going to be a lot of new teaching methodology that we've got to train our folks on, on our teachers on, which is the 11 days upfront that you got final approval finally on your calendar at the end of this agenda.
Well, you know, as we move forward on this specific, you know, vote, I, you know, I don't think we have much choice, so that's, you know, that's part of the decision-making process. And I, you know, I do think that we will, you know, and rightfully be relying on our, you know, our cadre of teachers across the district to make it work, to understand what the tool can and can't do. And I think that'll be a learning process for all of our, all of our staff and all of our families. So I do think the, the challenges are huge and, but again, I don't see us having any other option. So in Lowell, we do a very good job of making the best, the best out of a bad situation. So this will be one more instance of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I was just looking over my notes from a few weeks ago, and I had conversations with the superintendent and Ms. Desmond on 8/7 about the learning management system. And I agree with what Ms. Martin just said. We are, everyone is working to make the best of a really rough situation. And I'm really happy to see, and I so appreciate, Ms. Maggio, your reference to the toolkit because I think I have heard that throughout, that this is a tool to be used. It's a single platform for our students and for our families to become familiar with, and our teachers. And it is not a press play and teachers sit back, which is not something that anyone wants or needs. It's a way for our teachers to really use this and, and again, get, add their own content, add their own ways that they know how to engage students, but it gives us a baseline. And I'm happy that we have this to vote on tonight because one of the things that I think is still so difficult at this point, less than a month away from the start of school, and we are not alone, this district, but, is that we have a lot of decisions still to make, and we need to start making them so that we can orient our teachers and orient our families and students on some of the tools that we are going to be learning. So I just want to reiterate some of the things that I have heard now a few times about the content flexibility, the ability, this is being a single platform for families to use, just for students to use, for teachers to use, to become familiar with, with a backing of IT support on both ends by the system, by the company themselves. And that takes, I think, that's a big, important part. That the courses that are not in the learning management system, there's ability to add content to the existing courses and also maybe get some of our specialized courses in there. The students can work together, adding, taking out, supplementing, and moving the order. I think it's just really important that we can make a decision and take this. I agree, we would have vetted this much longer if we had been given time and opportunity, but we're just not afforded that during this situation. And, and here we are, and, you know, still moving forward, needing to move forward and do what's right for, for our students. And so I'm looking forward to supporting this. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Dillon, did you want to say something first?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of points. First, I think perhaps to the superintendent, remote learners are obviously going to need access to the internet. And how are we going to ensure that all of our kids and families will have that internet available?
Thank you. Ms. Desmond, this was one of the grants that I think someone was speaking to. Ms. Desmond, can you share a little bit about what we were awarded and how we're working to support families there? I do ultimately, though, again, believe that citywide Wi-Fi is a public good and should be provided across, much like we provide other utility access across the city. So I'll leave that there and talk about what we're doing through the grant.
Thank you. So we, there was an opportunity to apply for a remote learning grant. We, I applied for funding up to $2.1 million. We were awarded $1.74 approximately, it's 1.733 something. And that grant is solely for devices and hotspots. And so within that grant, we have the ability to purchase hotspots for approximately 4,000 of our families. So that's roughly just under 50% of our families if they have a need. So, you know, that was based on our high-needs numbers, percentages. So we are hoping that that will cover that need for our students and families.
Was, was there any attempt to look into the, was there any attempt to look into the superintendent, you had mentioned that device that you, that could be used? Was that looked into and was that just spelled?
Yeah, we can, we're continuing to assess all possibilities. You have the plug-in, the Wi-Fi plug-in. I know we did some assessments, Ms. Desmond, through the tech department. We are, right now, they're reimaging and imaging all of the Chromebooks. We are happy to say, I believe we've gotten our full delivery in of Chromebooks, Ms. Desmond?
We, we don't have the full delivery, but we have 70% of the devices delivered, I believe, as of today. And we've been told by the distributor that we should receive the rest by the end of next week, which I think is miraculous because I don't, I know there's lots of districts waiting for devices at this point, so.
So that's, that same department is also doing that full assessment. And Ms. Desmond, I, do you know where we are with looking at the plugins and the availability or utility of those?
Yeah, so, so before writing the grant, we had worked with a company for the hotspots. And that's what the hotspots are. They plug into the computer and they give you internet access. So, you know, we, as I said, I applied for, I think, $4,600. And the grant will cover, the grant that we receive will hopefully cover just over 4,000. So at one, when I had looked at the data, it looked like the, you know, our student population represents about 8,000 families, the 14,000 students, because not, you know, some families have more than one child in our, in our district. So as I said, the high-needs number was around 54%. So that's why we had put in for $4,600. So, you know, there was 25 million to go across the entire state. So I was quite pleased that we received the $1.74 million.
My last, yeah. My last question is, I know when we've been talking about the remote teaching and remote learning, that we're very concerned with our ability to test our kids and give them real grades, not this pass/fail that we had to go under before. And the accountability part of the attendance part, I mean, does this Florida system, does that give us that ability to make sure that our kids are attending the virtual classes and, and teachers are getting that done?
Ms. Desmond?
So that's, that's really one of the biggest considerations for wanting to have a platform like this. So the Florida Virtual runs, their course content is built into a system called Buzz. Buzz is the learning management system. So that allows a teacher to release course content on certain dates and then be able to see each day how long a student has logged in to that material. Then there, you can link an assessment to the material. So, and the assessment can be anything. It can be multiple-choice questions. It could be short answers. It could be an essay that then gets submitted to the teacher. And then the teacher has the ability to correct and provide feedback and the grade. So that's all maintained within that learning management system. And so that's a component of what Florida Virtual provides us. Now, you know, to the level of, you know, if, I think you have to look at everything in combination. So if a student is on the material for 30 minutes and then takes the assessment and doesn't do well, then you have to wonder, you know, how effective was that 30 minutes? Was, was the student fully engaged? I'm not sure. But I think it gets us to, it gets us closer to having a better understanding of what's happening than if we didn't have a learning management system. And so that really is one of the bigger considerations or one of the bigger reasons why we needed to look at something like this. It's to provide, you know, materials or tools for teachers to use, but also, you know, in the spring, we were really trying to figure out how long students were engaging outside of maybe a virtual session, right? A virtual session, you can see who's there with you. But outside of that, it was really hard for us to gauge how much time students were spending on, on lessons and materials. And so this is the reason for us going to something like this and looking for something like a learning management system. This just so happens to provide us content management as well. And so, you know, there are other learning management systems we could buy with nothing in them, but then we'd have to build out all the lessons. And so that, that takes a lot of time. You know, if we're going to build out a lot, a lot of lessons, all content areas, all grade levels, K to 12 for our teachers, we, we need more than a couple of months.
Really? Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I was just curious. I know I had forwarded through Minerva and the superintendent's office some information on another Comcast initiative. I don't know if you'd had a chance to, I believe she was forwarding it to you, Ms. Desmond? Maybe not.
It did, it did come in, Ms. Martin, and we're going to make sure we can explore it.
Excellent.
It's a great idea.
Well, only if it works. My other question was, in terms, and this may be, you know, something that needs to make its way to the technology department. As we're initializing all these new Chromebooks, are we initializing them individually or in groups? Do you know?
Ms. Desmond, do you have that information? We actually, Honey in the back is actually doing some of this work. He's not here for that, but.
Can you just explain to me what you mean by that? Because I'm not sure if I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, I only say it because we've, I've had this issue in, in our agency. We were doing group, you know, we were taking 10 at a time and taking them through that. Initialization is the word we used. It may be wrong. But what we found was that those 10 Chromebooks, once they were distributed to families, remained linked. And photos were, of different families were showing up on different people's Chromebooks. So I'm just wondering if...
So that's not, so that's not the process that we're following. So we do have, so, so we image them, but we image them individually. So they, they shouldn't be linked. And Honey, if, Honey, if you wanted to speak to that, but I think I have it correct, right? We're imaging, but they're individually, they're not linked together.
You got to go to the microphone, sir.
Appreciate it, Honey. You're not here for this purpose, but, so don't feel obligated. Do you have the information?
Yep. Everyone, so we image each device individually, and then each device has its own control. Student can log into the device, and once they log in, there's an application called Plexi that controls everything. We can see everything goes on the device. And the kids, whatever they do, that would be controlled, it's like under our network. So the same thing goes on. Once they got it, once they log off, the device will be wiped off.
Thank you.
And so if I could just elaborate on that for a minute? So when, if a student, if someone took a Chromebook that we've distributed, unless you have a user ID with Lowell Public Schools, you're not going to be able to get beyond the login screen. So like in the spring, when we handed out devices, sometimes families would say, there's something wrong with it, I can't do anything. Well, you can't do anything until you, a student logs in with the student account. And so it sort of safeguards what happens if someone got a hold of the Chromebook and it isn't a student with us.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Howey?
Yeah, real brief, Mayor. I witnessed summer school program, virtual learning, a couple of days a week. And I was blown away by what the teacher could learn, could teach my grandchild. It was amazing. So I think, you know, when it's being paid by a grant, and then it's for K to 12, and it's another tool, like she said, in the teacher's toolbox, I just can't see anything but good coming out of this, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion, motion to approve.
Well, I have a couple of questions. All right. So you're going to bear with me, I'm new at this, and I'm kind of lost. So we, we're getting the laptops. Every student is getting a laptop? And when is that being distributed? The first week of school?
Yep. We're going to work to image them, and then we're going to work to distribute them. Their plan would be to get them out to the kids before the first day of school, but we've got to get them distributed first. We got to get them imaged. What do you, what schedule do you have available, Ms. Desmond?
No, that's, that's good. So before school, they're going to get a laptop?
Right. So we, we will be distributing laptops up until September 16th. So, yeah.
All right. So the second part, whether you're remote learning or you're in class, everybody's going to take advantage of this virtual school system?
Everybody will have a laptop and everybody would have access. It's the, a tool for the teacher.
Okay. Now on the permission to enter, it kind of looks totally different because it says monitors student participation, provides assessment data, ability for families to monitor student progress. So it's going to help the families and the teachers, I guess, right? The parents are going to be able to monitor how much work they're doing, what their assignments are, and if they're doing their assignments and all that. Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Desmond actually wrote that one too, so I think it lines up to what she, what she shared. Is there anything different in that language?
No, but just to clarify, so a parent, with Florida Virtual, parents have the ability to be linked as an observer to their student's account. So they could go in and see what assignments are due, they could see the grades, the feedback that the teacher is providing to students. So whatever the student would be receiving or be required to do, a parent could log in as an observer to see all of that.
Okay. So when somebody asks the question about if students on a program for 30 minutes and they don't pass whatever questions are asked, it's not like a, some of the tests we take where they give you one page at a time, you answer a few questions, and keep moving on slowly? Is, is that going to be part of the program too, or is it going to be more or less? I was a little concerned when you said they could be on it for 30 minutes and then not get it. If, it should be simpler than that, right? It should be one... then not get it. If, if, it should be simpler than that, right? It should be one or two pages, and if you don't get it, you go back to the first page again, not 20 pages.
Yeah. So, so I think to your point, that, that's, that's how it would be. So if a, so the student assessments and the, and what the students are doing can be differentiated by the teacher, just like in class.
Okay.
So if you, if you were, if, if you were a student that perhaps received a, a test one page at a time, that assessment could be edited to, to do that.
Okay. All right. And then the other question was, let's see, oh, the city, the hotspots. So we got a grant to pay for some of the hotspots? Okay. Have we, I mean, I know on the city side, we're kind of trying to negotiate a deal with Comcast. Where are we with that? Do we have any, are we supposed to be working with Comcast? It seems like it'd be like half the price if we just paid for Wi-Fi instead of buying these things. If we bought 5,000 Wi-Fi, 5,000 hookups, it would cost us about 600,000 for the school year versus millions. So are we doing that?
Last year Comcast suggested that they had free Wi-Fi available for those days. We didn't find that that was as accessible as Comcast was advertising. We also went into last year under the assumption that there were enough hotspots across the city that with the Comcast and the hotspots available, that that would work. We knew that. We also learned that didn't work. So I would be, I think any opportunity for partnership is an opportunity we need to explore. I just don't know that it would take the place of all these, also the supplemental work, which we'll continue to look into. Accessibility to the internet is a challenge here in Lowell with, as in most other communities, as I'm hearing, because of the amount of utilization of the internet all at once for these purposes. I don't, I would like to explore it further with Comcast, but the offer out, that was a really generous offer during the closure, didn't seem to pan out as effectively as we had hoped. So I wouldn't want to repeat that either.
Okay. All right. And then, so lastly, when we're talking about classroom learning and remote learning, I guess this has to do with this vote too. And I, and I understand, I appreciate, you know, the math on it. It's about $60 a student versus when we were talking 200 a student. Do we have enough teachers? I mean, you, I thought the teacher was gonna be responsible for their class, but it sounds like they're not. They're gonna either do remote or in-class learning.
Oh, there would be two, it would be two separate classrooms. So the teacher's responsible for their classroom. What we're working to do is to make sure that a teacher is either assigned to an in-person classroom or a remote classroom, that we don't have the combination that a teacher's simultaneously responsible for both the remote learners and the in-person. So we have class, teachers are assigned to classrooms. Just the notion and definition of classroom changes. We have some classrooms that are brick and mortar, in-person classrooms. We have some classrooms that are virtual classrooms, for lack of a better definition, that are the remote classrooms. But teachers will be in charge of their classrooms. They'll have students assigned. Students will know who their teacher is. Do we have enough teachers? We're working within the confines of what our budget is. We certainly, if we had more budget, I think I've said before, there's gonna be a need for more teachers, not less in the, this environment. We're gonna hire as many teachers as we can afford to hire. And we're prepared, and I think our teachers are prepared, to go forward knowing that we're trying to avoid layoffs here. And we're not gonna lay off some positions to hire others. We have the teaching positions that we have that we can afford. If you see a stimulus come through, Mr. Mayor, there's definitely a need for even more teachers. So we're looking for that federal stimulus, and we're really hopeful that we have the more positive budget outlook continuing to come forward from both the city and the state that we've been starting to hear about. I don't, I, so the answer to your question is, we can work within the constraints that we have. We have to do that financially. But I think as you start to hear about these reduced class sizes needs, there's always a need for more teachers if we can afford them. And you may see that coming forward as dollars come available.
Okay. So this program is gonna assist with the, with the lesson plans that the Lowell teachers already have, but it's gonna give them the tools to be flexible for learning for students, I guess?
Yeah, I think the best analogy, because this is a new environment for everyone, is the analogy that Ms. Desmond gave. Think about this as, in the same vein that you would think about a textbook. We provide our teachers with textbooks, but a textbook and a teacher simply teaching chapter by chapter does not make for good teaching. It's a resource that a teacher has. It's within their toolbox. And I think that's the analogy that Pina gave. This would be another tool within their toolbox for this newfound environment that they find themselves in. We haven't yet filled their toolbox. We did get, and Ms. Desmond can share with you, the committee committed to a lot of resources. Remember during our closure, when we talked about Chromebooks, we also committed to a lot of software to build out their toolbox. This is yet another tool. And what we're hearing from UTL, this is a tool that's not in the teacher's toolbox that would be highly valuable across. And I think, given the consolidated timeframe here, I'm gonna accept the, you know, our United Teachers of Lowell as the representative of our teachers, as being representative of what our teachers need.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion.
Yeah.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Arty, second by Ms. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Arty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
If I could, sometimes we have, I know a parent sometimes watches and has offered up support. Ms. Desmond has their, has your information. This doesn't mean she won't reach out to you. We had a student that also raised their hand, said they would like to be able to look into it. Ms. Desmond also has your information. So those of you that are viewing the vote, don't think that means that Ms. Desmond won't be reaching out to you. She has their contact information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, committee members.
So now we're reports of superintendent.
Thank you, Pina. I think everybody can.
Thank you.
My toolbox is in a golden home.
Pina always gets mad at me when I say this, but I gotta reckon, she has such a calming effect. That when she comes to meet with me in my office on a tough day, it's just, you know, feels like the sea sounds or something that you get on your phone for, so thank you, Pina.
Thank you all very much.
The next item?
What's that?
The next item is the.
Yeah, the school update, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we begin here, and I think this is to, you'll see as we start to go through it, I think there's two important points. These are social media posts that I just saw today that I think really signify the challenges that other communities are having now with implementing their plans that we think we've gone through to the extent to avoid or mitigate. We don't have a perfect plan. Let's all admit to that. There was no perfect option. We chose the least bad of a series of bad options. Nothing was ideal. Nothing is popular. But a couple stood out to me as other states and districts start to reopen. The first was a teacher from Georgia who, this appeared to be a district that tried to implement this rotating hybrid. And she shared from her classroom, she was assigned to a classroom where she had 19 kids in person and 12 remotely, and was given a little teeny desk with a glass shield and was told, figure that out, with no resources at her disposal. Now, that likely was a plan that probably felt pretty good to the school district, that they could meet everybody's needs, not thinking about the implications. We went through that conversation in depth. While it could sound beautiful on paper, we talked about it simply couldn't be implemented well. I, I feel for that teacher. Fortunately, I can say, none of our teachers will be put into that predicament. The second one that came, that I saw that came up was unfortunately, an observer that took a picture in California of two little girls sitting on the curb at a Taco Bell, and that was now their classroom. From this post, it seemed like the, the children were sitting there to get access to the Taco Bell Wi-Fi, but it's not quite clear why those youngsters were there. What is clear is that for some reason, their at-home environment was not as conducive to learning as the Taco Bell parking lot. That too is something that we talk through as saying, how do we get to avoid that scenario and make sure we support our young people? Hence the reason that we said in-person learning, if we can at all do it, is critical to our environment here and the needs of our children and families in Lowell. We have both of those options available currently, but only because the health environment allows us to continue to consider that. Dr. Hall will share with you within the facilities update, so I'm not gonna get too far into that, about how we're continuing to monitor that and make sure that we're maximizing safety while we maximize options. This presentation here, you can see it titled, "We're at the Next Benchmark Within Our Timeline." If you click the next slide. All right. So step one, if you recall, for our reopening, all of those scenarios that we put forward. Step two, get to our reopening plan. Step three, preparing our principals for reopening. And our principals have been involved in this process, and I want to make sure I recognize them and thank them. While they're technically coming back on contract, they never went off. They've been working nonstop, volunteering their efforts, and so have many of our teachers. And the next step is where we're at right now. So August 31st, our teachers come back. I was really excited to be able to, even in a webinar-type format, be able to engage our teachers. Over 1,000 school-based staff members joined us for our faculty forums, again, so we could share out as much specificity as possible. Principals were then able to engage them. We did about 15 minutes of just a district rundown. Then they broke out into their school sessions, and principals were able to give them even greater specificity. What classrooms, what programs will have in-person seats? How, what does remote learning look like? How are we gonna approximate our school day remotely? What does this quarantine environment look like? Teachers were able to engage in those conversations ahead of their first day back, which will be handled remotely for them for professional development. But our principals are really preparing for some robust professional development. Next slide. All right. So these are the questions that we have heard and we believe pertinent at this benchmark within our school reopening planning process. How will we support teachers and school-based staff to meet the needs of both in-person and remote learners? And again, I want to emphasize, because there seems to be confusion across, our plan here in Lowell bucked the trend. The trend was for teachers to teach both simultaneously. So you're certainly hearing that as that Georgia teacher confronted. That's not what we're gonna be confronting here in Lowell. You're gonna be, there are in-person seats for kids and in-person teaching assignments for teachers. There are remote seats for kids and remote teaching assignments for teachers. There won't be a teacher that has to teach Jackie at home while also teaching Andy in person at the same time. That's not what we're gonna be doing to open schools. All right. There's a, that question about how do we get from building capacity to programming grades? Dr. Gillery will take you through that. Our principals have been working really hard to translate that. And how are we supporting families in choosing between in-person and remote? Again, limited capacity. What we're seeing right now is far greater demand for in-person seats than unfortunately we can offer out. But again, safety has to be our top priority. Ms. Phillips will share that with you. All right. This first one is about how do we support teachers for both in-person and remote? We probably can go very quickly through this part, but Ms. Desmond?
Thank you. I, I've said all of this already tonight, so I'll just very quickly go through it. Agnewity, obviously, we talked about is not available any longer. Florida Virtual, again, when we were looking at these systems, we really wanted to see if there's a way to track student participation, if there's a way to provide student assessment data for our families and for our staff, you know, what parent access looked like, the course content being directly connected to our Mass State frameworks, and also the ability to embed lessons and embed some of our platforms, such as access to Google Classroom and CSO, which we use in the K-2 realm, the flexibility to, to be able to do those things. And so those were our considerations. Secondly, here, we, we were looking at moving forward, what the professional development schedule might look like for our staff coming in next Monday. This is a sample schedule. It's very broad, but we were really looking at a, a good chunk for our building leaders to be able to spend time on safety protocols and PPE and, and all of the things, social distancing, how classrooms have been revamped to meet all of the guidelines, and then a chunk on sort of what we're doing with teaching and learning, time for professional development. Obviously, we're going to have some sort of remote learning protocols. I think today we have more clarity on what that might look like. So we built in time for remote learning PD, time, really important time for teachers to be able to plan with their teams after hearing all of the, the information, and then time for teachers to set up classrooms, whether it be in-person or remote classrooms. So that, that's just a sample schedule of, of what we are planning for future professional development, starting next week. And, you know, some of the items, again, as I just mentioned, obviously, team building is gonna be really important, especially where we have been out for so long. Operational procedures, expectations for how students are going to be engaging, expectations for staff and, and how they can engage with each other and with the virtual environments, some of the teaching and learning PD that's gonna be critical for our, for our staff, both for remote and in-person classrooms, and then how we're going to embed SCL and wraparound services within both environments. So obviously, it's gonna be really important, even in the remote environment, that we have built in time for SCL. And then also, the ability for our families to know what wraparound services are available to them, whether it's remote or in-person. All of those things are going to be extremely important for our families moving forward and for our staff and, and students.
Excuse me. So all the professional development next week is gonna be in-person in the school building?
No, the opposite. The professional development will be handled remotely so that.
Why are we doing that if we're trying to open schools?
Because right now, we're getting our facilities and planning our facilities for readiness. So bringing in hundreds of additional people prior to having students in would be questionable at best. The second reason is because you can't bring more than 25 people into any one space right now by governor's requirements. We have upwards, over 200 staff members at Lowell High School alone. So anything that would be engaging the full school, unfortunately, wouldn't be able to be done in person. Second is, Mr. Underwood's team is working really, really hard to make sure, and the city's providing a lot, a lot of resources, and our principals and our school leadership teams are working really hard to ready our environments. Right now, we're only using very limited amounts of space in our school environments for in-person learning. So we aren't bringing back and opening up all of our spaces to engage all of ours. We also have some staff members that unfortunately can't be in an in-person environment based on their immunocompromised situation personally or with a family member. So it seemed with all of those challenges, that best offer professional development would be to offer it virtually. We did it with our leadership that way as well. If you recall, even though they were in our school environments, our sessions were handled virtually because we couldn't bring them all into one forum. The one session we did in person, we did outside. Just not, not really feasible to do it that way here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Dr. Gillery, now we'll share with you some details about how we start to move to actual programmatic seats that we can offer out to families.
Thank you. So as we look at our in-person and remote seats, school by school, this is the detailed work that we are actually meeting principal by principal, school by school this week, looking at the proposed schedule, looking at the seats, considering the waits that are going to be afforded, that we've announced in our, our school plan. So making sure that we have as many seats as possible to maximize those opportunities for our students and families. So we're going school by school, looking at their schedules, looking at the teaching assignments, all of those. It's, it's serving us quite the challenge, but also the, quite the opportunity, because this is what we can do to make it as, the best we can for our students and families. So this shows, slides serves to show you sort of a summary of where we are as the numbers continue to move, as students enroll, withdraw. All of those numbers will shift over time as they normally do. This, this doesn't shift from that in the pandemic. So, but this is where we presently are, where we were at the time of publication.
So again, a lot of credit to our school-based leadership teams, translating their building capacity into actual seats that will be available as opportunities for in-person teaching as well. We've heard a lot of, I've heard from a lot of teachers, I have to tell you, stopping me on the street, sending me emails. There's gonna be a lot of opportunity as well for in-person teaching in addition to in-person students. And then there'll be opportunities as well for remote teaching, remote students. And families, let me say again, we know that there's more demand for in-person than And families, let me say again, we know that there's more demand for in-person than we can provide. You'll hear from Dr. Hall, however, safety is our top priority. We are highly confident that we're going to have safe environments here utilizing these limited spaces. And then we will work to expand out more in-person opportunities as we continue to build our safety requirements around the COVID data that's available. And I just got from, I want to thank Councilor Rourke, just sent me through that the positivity rate in Lowell just fell below 1%. So the latest data that the city council is tracking is at .9%. That's yeoman's work on the part of our city. And I want to recognize our city first responders, health officials, and those that worked through the peaks of this pandemic to get us to this point.
Ms. Darney?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about these slides. So, and I understand we always expected that we weren't going to have as many seats as requested. So, but that number of 5,577 forms have been submitted. So that's like 9,000 we haven't heard from?
You're on to the next slide she hasn't presented yet. Are you jumping to...
Okay, so let's go. I had a question on the earlier slide too. So with the in-person seats, we had 3,763 seats we've determined based on all the, you know, requirements to make it safe. But so far, you've had 4,458 requests for seats. So that's a shortage of 695. Are you expecting that number is going to grow?
Yeah, there's the number of demand for in-person. We are believing that each school is likely going to exceed the availability of in-person, except for those limited cases, which we'll also talk about, where we're trying to find locations that can house 100% of families, like the Addy Day Challenge that we talked about. Unfortunately, where we are right now with safety requirements and what we know we have to do to maintain safety, it's not aligning with enough seats that everybody who wants to be in-person can be in-person. And I think the committee wisely went in the direction of an enrollment lottery in those cases that prioritize our highest need individuals. That's where translating it to actual grade levels and programs is so vital, which our principals have done, that doesn't translate across every school to the same program, same grade levels, same number of seats. So that's the work that our principals have done with Dr. Gillery's support and their leadership teams. So each of these seats then at each school is then translated. How many kindergarten seats do you have? How many ninth grade seats? I can tell you, really complex work at the high school. I'm just really impressed with the high school team coming together with a 500-student capacity out of a school that has over 3,200 students. To be able to come to a master schedule that allows them to approximate in-person for the virtual learners and also meet the needs of young people in school with the constraints they have with staffing, no easy task. They've done it. Really, a lot of credit to them. And each school has done that. Just again, really impressed with our school-based teams coming together around this. So yeah, Ms. Doherty, I'm sorry. It's not approximating the number that actually have demand, but it's, we're going to continue to work at it, I think, and with partnership with the city. Let's keep the COVID numbers down. Let's continue to build out our buildings, and we can continue to increase that number as the year goes on. Quarter two should hopefully be more in-person rather than more remote. But, you know, everybody's hearing about the concerns with flu season and so on, so we have to be ready for anything.
Sure, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Use the high school as an example. We open up, we have our 500 students in there along with our teachers. A week, I'm just creating a scenario. A week into school, a week into school, and I don't know, I'll use a half a dozen students, teachers test positive. Do we shut down the high school?
Yeah, so there's, we've got, this is a place where I think the state's done well. So it depends. In certain cases of positivity and exposure, the answer to that would be yes. It's everything from individual quarantine to classroom closure to school-wide closure. And depending on, is it a positive test? Is it exposure? What's the contact tracing? The state's done a great job with guidance on that. There's a lot of clarity in every what-if. And then our city has done a great job with testing and contact tracing. So based on the information we get from the Health Department, would enact a certain aspect of the protocol from the state, and we'll be prepared for any one of them. And any one of the what-ifs, from individual quarantine to classroom quarantine to school-wide quarantine.
Thank you on that one. And this is going back to, a little bit back to the Florida Virtual School. I'm being told in text message that there isn't any musical component to that program. Can that be inspected a little further?
I will look into it further. I do know that there are music courses that they offer in their content, so I can go back and ask more specific questions about it. But, you know, I think one of the things that might be, I'm not sure if this is confusion or not, but Florida Virtual has its own school that you can register your children for. That's different from what they're offering Massachusetts based on the RFP. So if you just Google Florida Virtual and you look at their site, that's different from what we are provided. So I don't know if that could be a disconnect or a confusion, but I can look into that more specifically for you.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Howie?
Two things. I got a phone call by a staff member on this page right here that the LeBlanc School...
Can I just, we should stop taking phone calls at this meeting. I know people are texting us. You can finish, but...
No, it wasn't until...
No, 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 this was at home. At home, and I said, I said I'd find out, but...
I just don't want anybody taking text messages.
Okay, no, I'm not. But the total enrollment at the LeBlanc should be 38. That's what I'm told. And the last question I had of the day there, Mayor, was does these numbers, does it, how does it reflect, is there any problem with the segregation order? Does it play into that at all? Is there any problems with that?
Yeah, a few. So we can't assume who's going to choose in, who's going to choose out. I think Ms. Martin highlighted this previously. This creates a number of equity concerns across when we start to create two separate school districts essentially between remote and in-person. And I believe Ms. Martin's quote was along the lines of the separate but equal. Separate is never equal, was the finding of the Supreme Court. So if we're looking at, in those kind of terms, you know, we're going to have in-person, we're going to have remote, and it's, we can't say equal. We're going to make sure that the remote approximates the in-person, and we're going to make sure the in-person is safe. That's our full commitment, and we're going to try to increase our in-person. Now, the shifts that the committee did with kindergarten, for instance, Ms. Phillips, can you speak to your analysis of that? That's the one shift for enrollment. Otherwise, we would have to start to assume family choices and lottery in order to determine that. And I don't want to do that at this point. I want to allow the lottery to play out. But kindergarten, there was a policy shift. So Ms. Phillips, can you share?
Yeah, our person who staffed us from the data office did not see a wide shift from the current population in the school buildings.
I apologize. I thought you were getting a text. All right, so we're out. Ms. Martin?
So can I ask? We've received, you know, 4,500 requests for in-person learning. I may be jumping ahead to the next slide, sorry. Do we have any sense of what the overlap is with our special ed students? And we've set priorities for students that we know are more fragile, you know, have a greater need to be in-person? Do we have any sense of, is there overlap in those 4,500 requests?
So we haven't conducted that level of data analysis yet. And actually, these are the numbers from date of publication. But as of today, we have around 7,500 submissions. We do have some duplicates that we have to clean up within that. At the point of publication, we had about 80% requesting in-person seats. That number may have shifted, but it is still on the high side, is what I'm being told. Tomorrow is the period for closing the applications. And the next steps will be to clean the duplicates, finalize the waits, run the lottery, and then inform families of the assignments.
And I understand that conversations are ongoing and making any kind of definitive decisions are, you know, difficult. I do think that these are numbers, though, that it's good for us to be discussing out loud because I do think parents should be getting a sense of exactly what the capacity is. If the overall district is going to be able to accommodate 3,763 students in an in-person environment and coming up on 8,000 have made requests, that that's their preference, that is going to be a very challenging formula, particularly when you weigh into it, again, the additional priorities of specialized student needs. So I think for parents who are, you know, considering their options, they should be at least well-informed that the challenge is going to be very real in terms of being able to provide in-person opportunities for students.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Darney?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I know, so we're going to have the challenge of, let's say, twice as many parents choosing for in-person learning than we're able to accommodate. We also have the timeline challenge, that people need to be planning their lives. So what is the expectation in terms of, if tomorrow's the close of the, to get your submission in, of what you prefer, what would be the timeline when we would be able to begin notifying parents? You made that, your student will be able to do in-person learning. What is the plan for that in terms of timeline?
So the date that we had set was September 4th. That gives us about a week to remove duplicates, to ensure that we have all of the different factors for each student who's applied, and then run the lottery.
Can I follow up with that? And so I know we are in productive negotiations with our union, as Director Boyd mentioned. I wonder if you can speak to how we plan to continue to move forward given that we don't have that agreement in hand, and we're looking at school beginning very soon.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Doherty. So, one, we've put out there to all staff from our HR office requesting submissions of documentation for individuals who feel that themselves are immunocompromised or they're someone directly in their household is immunocompromised. Those individuals would be given priority placement for remote positions by nature of the fact that being in a building for them reaches the high level of risk that the CDC has identified. We're working to make sure we can process those across. Outside of those individuals, then it leaves us another portion of our workforce that's available for in-person learning. We're starting to hear from many of them about their preference to be in-person. We'll be working across with those individuals to make sure that we can support them within their decision-making as well for the in-person opportunities that exist. They've been, people have been reaching out to myself, been reaching out to their principals. So the next step after we work to process those individuals that are remote, we'll make sure that we can work to process those individuals that are in-person. We are following three things right now, Ms. Doherty. We're following the current collective bargaining agreement. We're following, making sure that we can respect the rights of all of our employees. Two, we're following the task force documents in terms of what these programs look like, which were collaborative efforts. And then three, we're following DESI guidance and the guidance that's provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are in productive conversations. In an MOA between the committee and the teachers' union would override all of that should the committee be able to enter into that agreement. Absent that agreement, however, then those other three come into play. The CBA, current CBA, and DESI, current DESI guidance. We're utilizing the task force documents and the task force planning because that was a collaborative effort. That's what designed our reopening plan, and we think that gives a lot of specificity. You'll hear some things that come up that are a little bit different, like the learning management system, which is in agreement with the union, which is slightly different, but provides a tool and the union believes was not accounted for within the task forces. And we listened and hear the committee made a decision in the direction of what the union was requesting for resources. So absent those decisions, CBA, current CBA, DESI guidance, all around those task force decisions. If you have further questions, I'll try to give even further clarity because this is a point of question among the community, I know.
So when you say DESI guidelines, the guidelines right now say that teachers have to teach from their classroom, right? Are we going to have enough classrooms for remote and in-person?
We are actually hopeful right now that we'll be able to support our classrooms with choices and decisions from our teachers. We have, again, a number of teachers that have raised their hands, said this is of interest to them.
All right, but I'm sorry. Do we have enough classrooms, though? Didn't DESI say they want them to be in the classroom?
It's not, they didn't, not, they're not going to be in their classroom if they're teaching remotely. They would be in schools. Do we have space for, you know...
So we have enough space even though...
We would have enough space, yeah. The limit, the challenge, and this is an important one, though, Mr. Mayor, because I've had this question before. The challenge with all of these safety constraints are not around one person being in a room. I'm in my office. My office doesn't have open windows. It's when you start to put in a classroom of children as well, now you're talking about 16, 17, maybe even 20 people in one room. That changes the entire equation. So a teacher, I think, from DESI's perspective of teaching in a school absent the children is a different definition. But I think it's important to say, I don't know that that's the preference of the committee. I don't know, that's certainly not our preference. We believe that we can come to a more productive model to staff our schools rather than forcing people into our schools. But all of this would require a negotiated agreement with UTL, which we simply don't have right now, which means we have to start to default to what we do have, which is current CBA and DESI guidelines. Mr. Mayor, you bring up some important points, though. So does that give you further clarity? If you want to ask a follow-up, I'm more than willing to answer that as well because...
Okay, not real, I'm just confused, but, Ms. Martin?
I do have one quick follow-up to the mayor's point. The recommendation from DESI for teaching from classrooms, as I understand it, is that, a recommendation. Our plan does not incorporate that. That's not, you know, kind of what our plan is moving forward. Is that accurate?
That is.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Howie?
Just one last thing. The way I look at it right now, you're telling us that we're safe for 25% of the children to come back to school. The number looks huge, that there's going to be a lot of people that are going to get burnt by this. My question would be, if we go back with 25%, which our facilities will be coming up in a minute, and they're going to tell us, I think it's safe for 25%, how fast would it be? Like, if the numbers stay the way they are, that we could turn it to 50%? Just roughly, ballpark figure. Would you have that in your thoughts right now?
Dr. Hall, do you have any pacing assessment in terms of additional readiness?
If the positivity rate continue to go down as it's going down to the point where, is it .5? We feel as though we could double that within a month, three weeks to five weeks safely.
Remember, on top of that, Mr. Howie, there's a determination that will stabilize for a quarter. So it's a marking period. So the month decision that you would make would lead to family decisions for the next marking period, so the next quarter. So you're looking at approximately nine weeks in terms of family. But we could up it so that you can make a decision for that following nine weeks to get the information out to families if COVID data stays the same.
Well, I feel pretty good about things, even though we're not sending back a lot of children, only 25% of them. But at the same time, we know people are going to get burnt by it, and they're going to have to do virtual learning at home. But I feel real good on all those numbers that you have of people that want in-person learning. And this school committee and yourself, that's what we've been pushing for for months. And this is all we can do right now.
We're working to, again, two things that the community should know, and this is our overriding principles. We're going to bring kids back to school as much... We're going to bring kids back to school as much as we can safely. So safety is going to be our top priority. Opening schools initially, this is as far as we can go to commit to that safety. We'll continue to push for in-person learning. For those who can't be in-person, our guiding principle is to approximate the in-person experience. Remember, our first survey, and it's starting to show out here, seventy percent of our families were saying that in-person is what they were looking for if we were able to offer it. We're starting to see that start to pan out with decisions. But it's important to point out, this, it's not a lottery in the traditional sense. We do have some families that have been filling out multiple forms. Multiple forms is that some of the things that we have to start to work to make sure we can pare down and start to clarify. Our Family Resource Center did identify some additional information that they could put on there that would help ease some of this. A change in the form doesn't negate your different decision. That's not something that means that the form previously is now negated. It's just trying to make sure that we can continue to ease this process. So families put in your form, it's not a first come, first served. You didn't need to put it in very quickly. You had up to the deadline. Putting in more forms doesn't necessarily give you more chances. It's not a grab out of the hat. And three, the enrollment lottery will come into play in all likelihood because demand is going to exceed supply in terms of our seats. But we believe that the enrollment lottery is set up in such a way as approved by the committee that prioritizes our most at-risk students. Families, we're continuing to work to get to in-person. We know nothing can replicate that in-person interaction, but we've got to do it safely. And this committee has taken every single safety precaution, which is what has us down here. We didn't say one, we said all. That's windows, that's six feet of distancing, that's air purifiers, that's masks for every kid. Every possible precaution, which is why we're so confident. Every possible precaution means we reduce our numbers down lower than perhaps you're seeing in some other communities that aren't following every precaution. We're doing every single one.
Why don't we finish the last two slides? We have a speaker on this.
So this is just to bring us back to our timeline to let you know that we're fully on track here. It's a, it's, it's without a doubt the toughest school opening that I've experienced in my career. I'd be hard-pressed if somebody told me it wasn't the toughest in their career. But we're continuing to follow our path and we believe we're ready for the next step. You see the last one there? So the next update you'll be getting is about readiness for our first day of students. And I know there's a lot of stress and anxiety. We're also building, trying to build towards that excitement that the first day of school should be. I shared with you when I came into this position and the buildup we had to our first day of school last year. I think the first day of school is kind of an unwritten holiday. It's something that everybody remembers their first days of school. You remember it for your children. There should be excitement there. And we're confident this is going to be a great year, even though it may not be a perfect year, because it has to be a great year. Our children don't get another year at twelfth grade. They don't get another year of kindergarten. We're going to make it a great year. And I'm also confident that we can, as we build towards the first day, provide more certainty, alleviating the uncertainty, alleviate some of the anxiety and stress. And the more we can do that, the more excitement we can build. Committee, I, I can't tell you enough how proud I am of the team you see in front of you and the many people that are working throughout our schools. Our principals, our school leadership teams. They were, you saw the third box before. They've now gotten us to a point where we're ready for four. And I know our teachers and I believe in our teachers. And our teachers are going to come back, our paraprofessionals are going to come back and they're going to make sure we're ready for that step number five. And families, we're going to be ready for you and we're going to build that excitement for the first day of school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a caller, Ms. Desmond.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Darcy Boyer. I live at two thirty-five Avon Street. And I'm a parent of a student beginning fifth grade at the Wang. I'm just bear in mind that I wrote these comments before this meeting. So some of these questions have been addressed a bit, but I'm just going to read as I wrote. Thanks. So tonight's comments are more personal than structural, which is unusual for me. But as the feminist movement reminded us, the personal is political. While the cause of our current crisis is deeply rooted in structural injustice and inequality, its impacts are deeply personal. So now, let's get personal. My family has decided to choose remote learning, but we still have very little idea what that actually means for my son or our family. From what I can tell through rumors and hints in tonight's agenda, and it has been determined, the district is leaning towards purchasing toward the virtual. All I know about this learning management system is what is described by DESI. I don't know why it was chosen or what advantages it has over other systems. Again, I realize this is addressed and I do, thank you. Still have questions, but. Given there is so much I don't know, I will start with what I do know. I know that whatever system is used, it needs to be flexible to meet the needs of my family and others in the district. As much as we may want to ignore it, we are still in the midst of a public health and economic crisis. I have been laid off from my job and will be returning to work next week at half the hours and half the pay and a very uncertain future. More fortunate than some, but not ideal by any means. My partner will be returning to in-person work, so I will be the one at home with my son, trying to manage his work while also dealing with the stress of working in an institution that has laid off hundreds of employees. This will be my work reality, which is also now my home reality. There is no longer any preparation of the two. I will be the first to acknowledge that I'm incredibly fortunate to be able to work from home. I can't imagine what parents who don't have that option are facing right now. But even though I'm fortunate, it is relative and nothing is good about this current situation, which is why we need to be sure that flexibility, understanding, and support are the foundation of this school year. From what I can see, DESI's work expectations will be higher than they were in the spring. Structured instructional time more rigid and the number of hours more aligned with a normal school day. I will again remind everyone, and I know I'm a broken record, that there is nothing normal about this school year and nothing that DESI says or wants will change that. But if there is intent on tracking attendance and completed work, there must be flexibility for when and how that work is completed. To be honest, I don't even know what I'm looking for. For us, five to six hours a day, no matter how it is spread out, seems like too much. In the spring, we tried to have some sort of a schedule, but it was a struggle to have my son do even two and a half hours of structured time over the course of the day. Everyone's family, family situation is different and every child's motivation level is different. Our son gets work done when he's in school because he responds differently to teachers than he does to us, parents. And of course, in-person instruction is much more interesting and engaging. But I know other kids are differently motivated and derive satisfaction from completing the remote work. For my family, this remote learning environment creates friction and struggle, similar to what we experienced with homework in the little days before COVID. But now it's all day, every day. With so much economic stress and anxiety, having this daily battle just adds another level of tension to an already challenging time. With this in mind, I'm very curious about assessment and accountability for the coming year. I haven't really seen that addressed. I'm not sure much has changed for families since the spring, and in some cases, things may be worse. But it seems that their students, and thus parents and teachers, will be held to a higher standard. What happens if they aren't able to complete the work due to very real and valid challenges and circumstances? Do they get left behind because they didn't have the supports and resources they need? Or because they just don't do well remotely? So many questions left unanswered and so few weeks left before school. It's hard to know what questions to ask when we don't even know what we are responding to. My hope for this year is that we listen to students, teachers, staff, and parents, and acknowledge that this year will be messy and that we should not force the same level of expectations that we do in a regular school year. I hope that we leave with kindness and understanding, not judgment and punishment. Maybe we use it as an opportunity to rethink how we do school and focus less on testing of arbitrary standards and more on experiential and project-based learning. What we are going through in this moment is a learning and teaching opportunity that no one could have planned for. But now that it's here, maybe we should embrace it rather than try to ignore the way. It's too much to hope for and it shouldn't be. At the very least, I hope we can come out of tonight's meeting knowing which learning management system has been chosen, how the day will be structured, and how students will be assessed. I don't think that's too much for three weeks remaining before school starts.
Thank you. All right.
That concludes that presentation. Unless there's further questions, we're prepared to move on to the next presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, we'll get right to facilities.
Thank you. This is an update committee, Mr. Mayor, from, that we'll continue to provide to you at every meeting. So the format might look very familiar, hopefully does look very familiar to you. All of the data has been updated. Dr. Hall, as well as Mr. Underwood's here, take you through the information. Again, every step, every precaution has been taken to ensure the safety of our buildings at twenty-five percent district-wide capacity. We are confident that our young people who will be in-person, our staff that'll be in-person, will be safe. That's the reason that the capacity has been reduced, to make sure that we can ensure that safety following the guidance of the committee of many meetings to this point. Dr. Hall?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. So as Dr. Boyd stated, we have the same format as the last few weeks, but we've updated the data. But I would like to say, I am going to change it up a little bit. I'm going to have Mr. Underwood come in and inform everyone about what we're going to do over the next few days in order to verify that the classrooms we've selected are ready to go. But first, I would like, like to point out that this committee has established a system that we've followed to ensure that we do have safety in the schools. And I want to go over once again all the precautions that the committees set us forward to try to attempt to bring as many kids in as possible. We really have leaned forward by looking at what engineer companies have been recommending to other entities. And we've tried to implement those in order to get the buildings as good as we could get them. And to go over it again, the plan is to have all working HVAC systems, the cities in our buildings every day, changing filters, checking our HVAC systems. We're using our best classrooms, as everyone's well aware. We're not using classrooms that don't have working windows. And even with those exterior classrooms, we're not using interior ones. The cities also purchased four hundred thousand dollars in HEPA air purifiers, one for every single classroom. Additionally, we're having two-time-a-week coordination meetings with the city. You can see, we've added a list of issues in particular schools, which is shared with the city, which is in our later slides, so skip to that quickly. We have a bunch of data here for everyone to see of issues that we're coordinating with the city. And the principals are updating this on a weekly basis. Additionally, the committees had numerous votes where they've granted permissions to enter for masks, hand sanitizers, acrylic barriers, face shields. We've implemented social distancing measuring to show safely how many students we can put in each classroom and adjusted our classrooms in order to best fit that. We've followed what the Commonwealth has put out in establishing that Lowell is a green community, meaning that there should be no reason why we don't have in-person instruction. We've adjusted our lunch delivery program where the meals are going to be delivered to the classrooms to limit student movement and potential, or reduce potential for exposure. We've reduced, the committee's authorized reduced busing in order to promote walking, which is the safer means of transportation, again, to reduce exposure. We've granted medical exemptions for employees that are at risk so they don't have to come in and teach with the children if they have a heightened risk for exposure to COVID. As you've heard earlier, there's a family choice system, too, where families, if they don't feel comfortable having students in the buildings, they're allowed to opt-in to remote learning or choose remote learning. And I guess, too, I would like to stress, too, and Dr. Boyd brought it up earlier, our principals, yes, their official work year just started recently, but they have been engaged all summer in helping to make the learning environment safe in planning and going over all the models of learning and continuing in the buildings every day to plan for children. So I felt it was important, again, and again, lastly, as last year, the superintendent, I'm quite confident, and the city manager wouldn't either, from knowing her, they're not going to authorize having students or, or faculty in the buildings if it wasn't safe. And with this twenty-five percent system and monitoring that we're doing, I'm quite confident that we'll have a safe learning environment. So we have updated what we do have for PPE on hand on the slides and what our current capacities are. I would like to point out that we're still tracking the positivity rates and our incidence rates. Dr. Boyd went over them earlier, but our, the trend in Lowell with COVID is on the way down slightly. So with that, I'd like to call up Mr. Underwood if he could give a explanation on what we're going to do. We are going to identify, or we have ten to fifteen classrooms we're going to plan on using. And Mr. Underwood and his team is going to visit all of those to do one final check to ready to make sure we're go, we're ready. Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Mayor, this is Shan, superintendent, committee members, good evening. So Dr. Hall pretty much hit it all on the spot. We are working every day with DPW. They're working overtime. We're ordering supplies and, and pumps and, and pulleys and, and motors for our exhaust fans. What I can tell you, and I know there's a lot of anxiety and stress with everybody. I have kids that have kids that are in the school department and they call me every day. Dad, are we going to school? You know, what's going on? So we're all in the same boat. And I can tell you, right now, Mr. Arnie asked me a couple of weeks ago if I could promise anything with the HVAC or heating over the winter, and the answer was no. I can tell you right now, I am very confident in, in, we'll use the word guarantee, that at twenty-five percent capacity, and I, and I'll talk to the teachers, I hope they're all listening, Paul Georges, at twenty-five percent capacity, I can guarantee that every school, every classroom that we're going to be using will have a working window, at least a couple of them, a working ventilation system, a clean filter, a air purifier, and every PPE piece of equipment that they feel that they need to feel confident. If they want to come in with a gown and a face shield and a mask and gloves, we have it for them. If there's a classroom on that list that is identified to be used and I go in there, it will be myself or Paul, Saint Seer, nobody else. If I go in there and I put up and check that ventilation for, for a good ventilation and it's not working, that classroom will be marked off as an X. I'm on this team. I work with the city, my check comes from the city, but I work for the school department. Not against anybody here, but I'm going to be as transparent and, and outright with anybody that, that, any information I get. This started at least over a month and a half ago when Paul Saint Seer and I went, and we started visiting rooftops on our own and started going over and checking them. And it had to be ninety-five degrees in those last couple of days. You know, we did yeoman's work that day. We reported that to the city. A lot of it was kind of surprising, too, because, you know, the, the exhaust fans in buildings, you don't know until you actually get up there and check. We were followed the very next day with the assistant city manager, Christine Clancy, Alex McGee, Jim Green, after we gave them, and we've been working daily, around the clock, overtime, working on these exhaust fans, these filters, the clean. I think the buildings look great. I think the guys did a lot, of course, they should, we had a couple of extra months. We've done a lot of cleaning at the outside of the buildings. I know grounds was always a concern. I think most of them look pretty well. We have one or two that we're still working on, but we've power washed buildings. We've just, we, we've done a lot of good things. We've just, we've done a lot of good things in the building, and I just hope the teachers' union, the parents, everybody that's watching believes me. I will personally be in there checking classrooms, and if it's a classroom that we're going to use, and it's not to our standards, working windows, working ventilation system, clean and new filter, the air purifier, we won't be using it.
I just want to clarify, too, the clerks' offices, principal offices, house offices at the high school, we're looking at those, too.
Yes.
We always mention teachers, classrooms, we're doing everybody. Custodial offices, right? Everybody's safe who comes in.
We're checking everything right now, right?
Just want to include everybody, right?
Right. We're including everybody, yep. Nurses' offices, absolutely, main offices, absolutely.
Yeah.
We have enough air filters, I'm sorry, we have enough air purifiers, although we have 1,000, which is only a few more. We have 974 classrooms in the district. We have 1,000 air purifiers. Knowing we will not be using the inside classrooms for right now, we'll probably be readjusting some of those air purifiers to main offices, clerks' offices. You know, we want to make everybody feel comfortable, and we want to do the right thing by everybody, and I know everybody on all the teams want to do the same thing.
I was there today with you. We checked out three schools, and high school's looking good, the elementary schools that I went to, middle schools, you guys are doing a great job, so.
We still have a lot of work to do. We have 13 days, we have 13 days before the kids come in. Will everything be fixed by Monday when the teachers come in? No. But we're making good progress. And again, if these classrooms that we identify that are going to have kids and teachers in them are not up to our standards, they won't be used. Simple as that. And you got my word on that. Happy to answer any questions or any concerns that anyone wants.
No, thank you. Can you just, what's the deal with the Maury hot water system, again? That just failed?
It just failed. Jim Green and DPW is working on it right now. I believe they have a plan in place to replace that, even if it's on temporary water heater for right now, because I know there might be a problem with getting the newer unit up, you know, up to, I won't say up to be an audit and in place at the time, but we have the ability to add electric hot water heaters there in no time at all, and I think that's going to be the plan right now.
And there's obviously no guarantees, right? It's only a 12-year-old building, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's only 12 years.
So great guarantee by the state, sure. All right. Thank you for all your work.
Yep. Any other questions, anybody?
I think we need to also add in there, the city is stepping up in ways that I've heard the city has not done previously, but has always been my experience with the current city manager. I think it's also important to point out, I was out there at Colley Field earlier today, brand-new turf being installed over at Colley Stadium. Apparently, that had gone well beyond its lifespan. It's a 10- to 12-year lifespan, I'm hearing that, had been out there for about 16 years. This mayor, this city manager, on top of that, we're getting a brand-new turf out there. The type of work that's happening within our schools, I'm not seeing the concerns that were raised from yesteryear with the current administration across the city, and I could tell you, I appreciate you, Mr. Underwood, by saying, you know, this is your personal integrity. This is a high-integrity man in front of me here, and I'll tell you, the question I asked him, if you would not put your family into a classroom, then please cross it off, he's been doing that, and he's been doing it personally. Also, you're not seeing here Paul St. Seer, who's Facilities Area Manager, he'll come in as well. These are high-integrity individuals, and I want the community to know, if we're saying that it's not safe, we're starting to call into question individuals' integrity, and these people are high-integrity people. Over here, you have Dr. Hall, who's a Colonel in the Army and an attorney. Now, if those two classifications that are requirements of him outside of this field, to tell you the truth, is not something that we want to believe in, then we've got to take a moment to reflect and think about why that might be. But we can't allow adult trust issues to get in the way of our children's learning and meeting the needs of our families. And it seems to me, across these conversations, that that's starting to happen. I think, again, for us here in this room, we can't allow those types of adult trust issues to get in the way of the needs of our families and kids. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. I really do appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. I forgot to just mention one more thing. Let's just to point out the hard work and the dedication that Alex McGee and Christine Clancy have been putting into the school department, too. Jim Green does it every day, but Christine and Clancy, in her role, as busy as she is, she's put in unamounts of hours that I could add up in the schools. And Alex McGee, great job, and I just want to thank them publicly.
One question from Ms. Clark, and then I have one follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before you leave.
Through you to Mr. Underwood. Can you just clarify, when you step into a classroom, what is your inspection process? What does that look like?
So, it sounds a little, you know, odd, but really what I do is I'll go in with a piece of paper on it, and they're going to say, that's your, but that's really, if you've got a working unit, and you've got a new filter, and you've touched that with a paper, whether it's a paper towel or tissue, and you've got good suction there, and you've got a working window, you know you've got a fairly safe building. I mean, a fairly safe classroom. You've got return air, you've got fresh air coming in from the windows. So that's the first thing I do. So I go in and I check the ventilation vent. The other day, it happened to be a paper towel and a ruler, a yardstick, but I start with that, then we go and check the unit vent, make sure the filter's been changed, make sure it's, you know, it's clean. Same thing with the rooftop unit or a ceiling unit. And then we, you know, we go from there. So it's the windows, the ventilation, the PPE equipment, the air purifier. So the air purifiers are coming in regularly now, I think we've got 150 in now, they've been distributed at the high school, more are coming in every day. We're confident those will be all in place before the kids get in. So, little, you know, old-fashioned, but it does the trick. You know, you don't really need, when you're looking at a unit, an exhaust system or ventilation system, you don't really need a lot of sophisticated tools. You've got to make sure it's running, you've got to make sure the filter is appropriate for that unit, and that it's clean and it's changed, you know, at least twice a year. So that's really what we do.
All right. And he's being modest. He went around, he checked all the sills for dust, tables, chairs are all separated, there's enough room for everybody, checking all the, anywhere where dust can collect, it's wiped down from the ceiling to the floor. So he's really doing a great job over there.
Right. And some of the, I think what I've seen a number of times is really about 10 to 15 classrooms per building is what we're talking about using.
Yeah.
And most buildings have 25 or so.
At least.
At least that many classrooms.
Middle schools are rough, most middle schools are around 31 classrooms. Some of the elementary is a little bit less than that, but I mean, we have 174 classrooms at the high school, and if you break it down to the 500, you're really looking at about 55 classrooms with nine kids in them. I was actually a little bit surprised. The mayor and I walked around the high school today and looked at several classrooms, and we were expecting to see 12 desks in there, because that's, you know, what they fit, and just about every classroom, I think, Mr. Mayor, if you agree, was nine classrooms. So we're looking at 55 rooms out of 74, 174 classrooms, sorry. At the freshman academy, it's 202 classrooms at the high school.
So we're really working to spread people out, make sure that there is.
And at a middle school, you're looking at roughly 12 classrooms, you know? 12 classrooms, 12 kids, that puts you about 150 kids in a building. So I'm very confident we can do that, even with our challenges in our building.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota, and then Mr. Howie.
Do you know what level of children are using MERV?
We would, there's a lot of talk about going to MERV 13, and what we found out is, MERV, I'm sorry, MERV 13 actually decreases, in some units, it actually decreases the air flow. So you look at the unit, you get some input from somebody that knows, and what we've figured is, MERV 11 is going to work best in our, you know, although it's recommended, but those are newer units. So it's kind of, you know, one hand or the other. You add the 13, you lose fresh air, you lose volume. So we feel that eight is going to be sufficient with some of our older units, and I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Howie?
Yes. Thanks for being here tonight, Mr. Underwood, but I might put you on the spot in a minute. Tomorrow, the mayor's going to be getting a citation from the state, okay? I don't know what the citation is about, maybe he does, but we should be giving you and Jim Hall one, in the school system, this school committee. I've never seen any, what's the word I'm looking for, to get along with the city. This superintendent picked Jim to watch the facilities, and once I seen you and him working in the past year, I have never seen anything like it. Now, I watched the city council meeting last night, I listened to every word the city manager said. The problem I had is, when I sit at home watching it, I goes, I said to the wife, I goes, listen, if this pandemic didn't come, we'd still be in the same spot with all our schools. You know, it's been about three or four years that we've been arguing about schools, not arguing, but trying to get them fixed. I know one thing for sure, I remember the city, the city manager has brought more money into this city because of what her name is and where she came from, from the Senate. She's done more for Lowell than any city manager I've ever seen. Now, with that said, the one thing she did last night that I didn't like, she protected the city council. There's a report that she had, was the Collins Report, and you know, you maybe fed me too much information over the past few years of both facilities. But my point is, and I want you to hit it, if I'm wrong, tell me. That report said we should hire about 22 people, roughly, approximately is a good word if a lawyer's listening to me. And I think we've only hired one person in the past couple of years. And I think if the city council, mayor, when you go back, if you focus on that Collins Report a little bit, we won't have these problems in the future. Now, the Collins Report, if you don't mind me putting it on you a little bit, wasn't it something like that? I remember going over it, but if you don't mind.
So, I'm going back about seven years ago, when that all started, I think it was you and Bob Gignac, a few other people, Mrs. Doherty, Ms. Martin was on the school committee at the time, and it all kind of came about from a letter, I'm not patting myself back, but I wrote a letter about seven years ago, talking about the Sullivan School. I didn't care about any of the schools at the time, my focus was on the Sullivan School, that's where I worked, that's where my heart was. And I believe at the time, we had 14 exhaust fans and no hot water. And again, both seven years ago. So I wrote a letter to everybody, and all of a sudden, we set up a subcommittee meeting, and we all got together.
Dragged me up on the roof.
Was that?
It dragged me up on the roof.
That's right. So, and we really started focusing on facilities back then. We had a subcommittee, we had the city here, I think Steve Genren was there, and then we came up with the Collins Report. I said, well, let's bring somebody in here and find out how we can work better. And what Collins Report was really all about was trying to find how DPW and school maintenance could work better, and possibly even combine their workforces. So they looked at a lot of different things, but one of the things they talked about was industry standards. And they're not talking like, you know, we wish or we want. Industry standards are based on your square footage of your buildings and how they're run. Hot water, steam, et cetera, et cetera. So they have these formulas, and what they found out is that they were 22 people short in DPW for industry standards. So that's an outside group coming in, looking at us, saying that, and yeah, you're right. To date, we haven't hired many people in DPW, and in my opinion, it's based because nobody wants to raise taxes, and that's what it really takes. You know, if you want to make a commitment to the school, to the schools, and to be where we want to be, you need the funding. You can't point fingers at 22 guys, and that's what we have in the DPW right now, we have 22 guys. That's electricians, carpenters, plumbers, masons, I forget who else I'm thinking of, but that's 22 people, one painter. You can't maintain a school building like that. You're running around repairing emergencies when you should be out, you know, doing some preventive maintenance. It's nobody's fault, you know, right now, but we have the information, we know what we have to do if, you know, if all the committees and councils want to really take this to heart and do the, they'll do the hard choice and raise the funds that we need to put into our schools. There was a lot, I know you talk about it all the time, I had said, I didn't know if we were doing the right thing, spending all that money in a new high school when we had buildings that were in such bad shape moving forward. But that was before we started doing MSBA work, too. And all of a sudden, MSBA work comes in, we go, oh geez, this stuff is available to us. So I think we're moving in the, I know, we're moving in the right direction. We've got six schools under construction right now for new boilers. Out of those six, we have two that are getting brand-new roofs. Next year, we'll be up, we'll be putting in applications for more MSBA projects. The following year, we'll be doing it again. So I think this is going to be the norm as we move forward. Now, it's the responsibility, sorry, but to you guys, to the city council, to fund these buildings and get these people the training, the pay scale that they need. We have an aging workforce, you know, I know I'm, my wife's going, Rick, shut up, because she told me not to be saying too much, but, you know.
Thank you.
A year ago, I was, I had to do a project, and I said, oh, I can do it. You know, I was carrying 36 bundles of shingles, I'm 56, seven years old, and I did it, and you know what, I couldn't move for three days. That's how our workforce is, too. If you, it's sad, but if you, we're hanging drywall. If you have these guys hanging drywall for eight hours, they'll be out for three days. So we need an investment in manpower and funding for our schools. Or we'll be back here in five years or four years, talking about, I won't be, but you guys will be here talking about the same thing in five years from now.
Yeah, we're starting to address this.
I'm going to let you go, I know it's been a long night, I got a little off-track there, but.
One follow-up question between you and the superintendent. What are we doing with the ADI school? Have we found a location for that yet?
The next slide, Mr. Mayor.
I did want to point out first, Mayor, you had a great question on the Maury, but if anyone at home wanted to check out a building, we had a line on the Maury that had what Mr. Underwood reported, and I've got to applaud the leadership team at the Maury. When the city was down there, they reported it in immediately so we could put it on this chart, so the principals are doing a good job with that, too. But in regards to the Addy Day School, as we reported before, we have a process that we go through before the superintendent gets all the information to decide whether or not to make a recommendation to the committee, and then, of course, the committee reviews, takes action, or asks for more information. We're in the italicized area where we're launching a survey on probably tomorrow, if not Friday, to stakeholders involved, employees, and families in the affected potential buildings, so hopefully, if not next week, but the week after, the superintendent will have the information that he has to bring it to you all, but we also know we're running out of time as well. So we're trying to do the best we can, given everything that's going on.
Can we accelerate that timeline, Dr. Hall? I want to make sure we can hit all of these steps. This is another example, like we said, you know, the curriculum decision, we wouldn't in typical times accelerate the timeline like that, but we have to. Dr. Hall, is it unreasonable to accelerate the timeline? I believe there's an open week next week, unfortunately, committee, it's an open week, and maybe we can set up one meeting, one decision point, just on this particular, particular item, because it is a, it's an important decision, but I want to make sure we can get through the proper protocol here.
We can. I talked to all the program directors and told them what would be coming, but we can get the survey out tomorrow.
So we'll, so committee will poll you for what your, what your week looks like, what your timeline looks like for next week, and we can do that, that meeting. Community members that are waiting on that decision, we'll make sure we post that as transparently as we possibly can, as we always attempt to do. I don't know who's scrolling down, but perhaps we can show on the screen all of the steps there that you were referring to, because it's not showing up for the viewing audience.
Can I just jump in? I mean, so it sounds like you're talking about moving buildings around. Why can't we just find a place for the ADI school? Why can't we move them to a new facility, a new rental, a new something, instead of dislo, instead of moving three buildings around? That's what we should be doing, right?
That is one of the five to six options, Mayor, that people are going to provide.
But shouldn't it be the only option at this point? Schools open in three weeks. Why can't we just move that one program somewhere?
It's more complex than just a simple move, based on the needs of the youngsters and also what we're working to do.
But if we're not disrupt three buildings, why don't we just disrupt one building?
There is, I don't know yet the answer to that question, which is what I want to make sure I have before I provide a recommendation to you. They're going through every possibility. We know the Addy Day building can't house its current population 100%, so we have to find a solution. I think you heard through the callers from two weeks ago, how this kind of process can easily find its way off-track. We're trying to make sure that we follow a transparent process, and I would like that opportunity.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, and then Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'm, I'm going to pick up on the word transparency, because I think that's been lacking with this particular challenge that we've been facing. The Janus ADI school does not have the space to meet the population of students. The Janus 80 school does not have the space to meet the population of students. That didn't just happen, right? So we've known that for a while, but yet, at least this committee, I have not heard very much about the process of looking at other building spaces, about, you know, just really even pursuing it, that we're getting calls from staff and family who are so concerned about disrupting, as the mayor mentioned, these other schools, the LeBlanc, which is a very different kind of program than the Career Academy, serving some of our most vulnerable students. So I guess I'm looking to speed up that timeline and get more information out, not only to this board, who's going to have to make those decisions, but to the families that are going to be, we're already, and a lot of it, it's not in our hands. I get it. You know, the idea that parents are going to find out on September 4, 13 days before they, are they going to actually have a seat in school? Or are they going to be doing remote? I mean, that doesn't give families much time at all, less than two weeks, to figure out what they're going to do, how they're going to manage remote learning when they have to be at a job that they can't do remote work. You know, I mean, there's so many complications. So with this one, I am frustrated that we couldn't have gotten more information about the work that's being done behind the scenes so that at least our community knows, these are the challenges. This is why we can't just find a building for the 80 school because of the needs of the students. And, you know, just to have that process a little bit more transparent for our community, for those of us sitting in this seat trying to make those decisions, and for our families and our staff that are involved with those students. So I'm happy to meet next week if we can get more specifics. I would, again, as the mayor says, it just doesn't make sense to me to take the LeBlanc, which, as Mr. Howie noted, it was listed as 23 students, or actually 38 students, a successful program, pull them over with the Career Academy, which is a very different population of students, also highly vulnerable, and also a successful program, to make room for the 80 school. If we're looking for something that's going to provide an immediate fix, I just wish we had more of that information soon.
Yeah, if I could, Ms. Dougherty, points well made. I think because of the amount of work that's going in, we sometimes lose sight of how little time has actually passed. It was August 5 when this committee made a determination to actually offer in-person learning. If we weren't offering in-person learning, this is not an issue for us at all. So we knew the Addy Day Building had some concerns. That had to be evaluated against multiple different indicators. At one point, there was a difference of opinion even on the Addy Day School between the current coordinator and Mr. Underwood's assessment of the facility. They then went out there together and looked at it. They had to come to a conclusion that the Addy Day couldn't serve in-person learning. Then the committee had to make a determination that in-person learning was the direction you were going. At the same time, you made a decision, which was the right decision based on recommendations, about prioritizing certain populations. All of those come together to tell us that in-person learning for the Addy Day population is a high priority, which then invokes Mr. Underwood and Mr. Lovato, who started working through and accelerating their timeframe. The confusion here was simply about what was needed to be a conversation about the Addy Day overall. Remember, that was an executive session lease conversation. That decision had to be made before you could start to even go down this path. That was, conversation was the following week. That was the point of confusion. There was an executive decision, executive session conversation about a lease. That was seen on an agenda, and the assumption was made that it was a public discussion about this decision point, because, again, the timeframe starts to get away from us. That was confusion internally that made its way out to the staff, where you should have been at step six here, as Dr. Hall pointed out. It was assumed that we were jumping all the way to the committee, and we simply had not done that yet. Mr. Underwood and Mr. Lovato had come to their determination of what their recommendation's going to be. That needs to continue to flow here. The real confusion that caused me concern in the community, and you as committee, should, I would imagine, concerned as well, is that certain members of our community were assuming that their input was just completely discounted. That input matters. So we have to go through this because this process, to make sure we understand the impact then of facility decisions, programmatic decisions, on the individuals who are actually implementing our programs. That's the process that we're under here. So a recommendation from staff goes through another vetting process, then it ultimately comes to the recommendation from you. If I can give an analogy to, on the instructional side, remember, there were some pushes and some pulls to make a quicker decision around the learning management system. Well, if you look back, if we had made that quicker decision and Ms. Desmond wasn't able to go through her work, you would have been paying three times the amount for the exact same resource. Now, so again, we couldn't go through in an ideal way. Again, we have, I have parents and students who have offered and are willing to be a part of a vetting process that we couldn't get to yet, but we at least got that far. Here, I think we can get to a better decision. I don't know, though, of what that decision will be. I would like the opportunity to weigh it. There are costs and benefits to each. A facilities decision that Mr. Underwood can provide a recommendation then has to be vetted by our curriculum office. Is it a good programmatic decision? We have to know the impact on individuals. There are limited decisions and opportunities in front of us. But then, there's a limited timeframe. But we can utilize what we do have to make best decisions for our kids. So I think, Ms. Dougherty, it does, I think you're absolutely right that we are getting very close to the time for kids to come back. But it's also important to look at how little time has actually passed, because we're trying our best to add a 25th hour to a day. We're working 24. I know it doesn't feel good to any, but I did tell our principals and our leadership team, I was excited to see them. But quite frankly, I needed to see them, because we need to get our staffs back. I'm going to be excited to see our teachers, but we need to see them, because that's how we start to get ready. And I want to echo Dr. Hall's statement. We have countless people who have just been volunteering and working. I don't think our principals have taken a day off, even though they're supposed to get a contractual summer vacation. They just simply haven't. So, thank you, Ms. Dougherty. You're absolutely right, and we're going to continue to make best decisions with, under, unfortunately, on less than ideal circumstances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Howie?
I just want to thank Mr. Underwood for being here and what you've done over the past few years for us. Maybe we can get him out of here, because he's been standing there for like half hour. I'm sorry, my friend. But you've done a tremendous job for us, that's for sure, okay?
But we have a good team. It's not just me. We have a good team.
Well, I think you do above and beyond what the school should be doing to be fixing our schools. Cleaning them is one thing, maintaining the buildings is another. And I believe that should lie on the city side of government a little bit more. And I'm glad I put you on the spot tonight, and thank you for all your comments.
So, Mr. Dakota?
Very quickly, I'd like to take a second to thank you again, Rick. But I would like to say that I can attest to Paul St. Seer being a really trustworthy and great employee. Known him for some time. I can vouch for that guy, for sure. I got to...
Great guy. Great guy.
As we're vouching, I want to recognize someone else. Nobody's pushed me more on facilities than Mike Dillon in the back. So as a firefighter, he's really pushed on the quality of facilities. He's been on top of this. And he's a father with children. And if he's not going to put his children in a school that he wouldn't have confidence in, and I can tell you, leading up to this pandemic, fighting on facility conditions, the needs of our facilities, Mike Dillon was right in front of it. And you're hearing from him as a father. You're hearing from Hillary Clark as a mother, saying that, and I don't think either one of you would be putting your children into a situation that's less than safe. So, and you heard from Mr. Howie when he speaks to his grandchildren. So I know there's some adult trust issues across the city. I've heard about that. I haven't personally experienced it. I've experienced high integrity people that are working on behalf of children. And I want to give a lot of credit to our city, our city manager, and our mayor. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so before we close up this, it just seems to me like, so, next meeting, next Wednesday on the 2nd?
Yes, we have a meeting. Ms. Sheehan, just let me know. We have a meeting already posted, it's September 2.
All right. But we've got to know by next week. I mean, basically, everyone's asking me, and I think they're asking us. 70 to 75% of kids are remote learning. So they want to call it remote learning. We'll call it whatever we want to. But remote learning is the majority of kids that are, how are they going to learn next year? By next Wednesday, we have to know what we're doing with that 80 school. Either we're renting somewhere. Next Wednesday is going to be too close to start moving two, three, four schools around. So I think, you know, the sooner we get on that and know what we're doing, there's banquet halls, there's maybe facilities that you'll all we could rent. There's got to be somewhere to move that program to without disrupting other programs, I would think. So we've got to make a decision on that by next Wednesday. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We could lease one of the St. Louis buildings.
Well, we should be looking at that.
I want to come back to that.
Right. But, you know, again, you're going to look at the size of the building, who's paying the heat, who's paying the electric and all that stuff. But if we go into a building where it's already being used and they had large open space, you know, makes it cheaper for us. Ms. Clark?
I just want to say thank you to everyone involved in this last page. I appreciate that it's here, laying out all of the steps that it really takes. On top of a very challenging time, we obviously have an additional challenge that is important to resolve before school begins. But I do appreciate that this is clearly laying out what steps are being taken, the fact that we are taking input from the public, from the staff, and that this team is going to come together with a recommendation that has been thought through and thoroughly vetted as much as possible for us to make our best decision. So I appreciate, I think, all of the ideas. And I believe that that is being taken and heard, as all of our other ideas have been from this team. But I do want to say that I appreciate we've got the most expert people here working on resolving the situation while also taking into account the input from families, staff, leaders. And I want to, I appreciate, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the recommendation is so that we can make the best decision that we can as a school committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? So I need a...